Hi Leslie.
This is John.
I'm sorry, it's who?
Hey, I'm on early because I have a little bit of an equipment malfunction and I'd like to try and be on both from my laptop and from my phone.
Okay.
I want to make sure that that's not going to cause problems.
You know what you could try to do is when you sign on, sometimes I've had to do this in the past, you choose audio through your phone.
Yeah, you get to, you get to select.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna. I'm on with my laptop. And I'm gonna come on with my phone.
I see your picture.
Alright. I do. No audio on my phone. Okay, does this? That doesn't work. Does this, does this work?
You sound good.
Okay, great, I think problem solved.
Okay, so we just see you twice, but we know you're only here once.
Yeah, I'll just do video there.
It would be a little suspicious if you got to vote twice, wouldn't it?
Hi everyone, Leslie, I'm hearing kind of echoing feedback and delay, is that coming from Zoom or is that just me?
I don't hear it.
Okay.
But, does anyone else hear it?
No, everything comes through once.
Okay, it's on my side and thank you.
Okay, then just a good reminder to.
Hey Leslie, this is John Privatelli, I'm just testing my system.
Oh yeah, feel free to show yourself.
Do you hear me okay?
You sound perfect, you look perfect, you are perfect.
Certainly not, no one is.
Alright, and I will be right back.
Hello everybody and welcome to this regular meeting of the planning commission on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. This meeting is called to order. First order of business is that I will request staff to call the role for commissioners who are present and not.
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Commissioner Haben, Haben, sorry.
Hey, Havelin.
Hey, Men. Commissioner Lubomirsky.
Present.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Saudi.
Present.
And, oh, not and, Vice Chair Privatelli.
Here.
And Chair Samuzi.
I am here, so next up, thank you Leslie, we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Great, hearing none, next we'll move on to the meeting procedures. So, due to the COVID-19 shelter in place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting our public meetings. I'd like to ask staff to address how public comment will work this evening.
Yes, thank you Chair Samuzi, at this time I'd like to ask everyone other than the commissioners to turn their cameras off until it is your turn to present. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and streamlined to YouTube viewers. Viewers are welcome to attend by telephone by calling 669-900-9128 and entering the meeting ID which is 897-5534-1830 and then the pound sign, or watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you are participating by telephone tonight, wish to provide comments during the public comment period, please press star nine when the chair opens the public comment period. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. You will have up to three minutes to speak. And please know I'll repeat these instructions before every public comment period. If you submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or a letter, excuse me, it has been forwarded to the planning commission. Enclosed captioning is available for this meeting and the link is on YouTube, thank you.
Let me now describe the meeting procedures, we will begin with the staff report. Then we will hear from the applicant, the applicant will keep their presentation to no more than 10 minutes. Then members of the public will be invited to speak. People on the conference call can speak when they receive notification that they have been asked to unmute themselves. Please keep your comments two, three minutes. Commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or public after each segment. We will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. Anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda may address the commission at this time. Leslie? You're, you're mute Leslie.
Thank you, sorry about that. So again, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature, if commenting by phone, press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is, well, and then I'll let you know to press star six if you are up and. I don't see anyone wishing to speak from the public.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar which has one item, which are the minutes from September 14th, 2021. The joint planning commission and design review board study session. And this was involving the approval of the joint study session meeting minutes where we reviewed the, the Northgate Mall V development project. The recommended action here is approve as submitted. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
Again, if you wish to speak on the consent calendar, please press, either use the raise a hand function at the bottom of your screen or if you're phoning in, please press star nine. And I see no one.
If there are no commissioned comments or edits, I would entertain a motion, please announce your name if you are sending a motion or if you're seconding, please.
Commissioner Lubomirsky moved to approve the minutes as recorded.
Do you have a second?
Commissioner Havelin, I'll move to second.
Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll move on to roll call. Staff, could you please conduct roll call?
Yes, so I have a motion by Commissioner Lubomirsky and a second by Commissioner Havelin. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Lubomirsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Mercado.
Obstain, I was not at the meeting.
Commissioner Saudi.
I also abstain, I was not at the meeting.
Vice Chair Privatelli.
Hi.
And Chair Samuzi.
As well. Alright.
Motion passes.
Great, we'll now move on to tonight's first item for public hearing and this is the 52 to 54 Fremont Road project, this is continued from September 14th, our last meeting. This is a request for a lot line adjustment to reconfigure two existing parcels. Environmental and design review permit for a new 2,492 square foot single family residence on the newly created Marquardt Avenue lot. And an environmental and design review permit for the modification of an existing residence to partially rebuild the existing residence with exceptions to reduce the amount of minimum natural state and building setbacks on the new Fremont Road lot. The recommended action here is to recommend approval to city council as submitted. At this point, I will request a staff report.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Dave Hogan, I'm a contract planner. I'm going to share my screens so that I can conduct my presentation. Thank you. The project before you this evening is, is a relatively simple straightforward project in a rather constrained site. It's not working, one moment, there we go. The application consists of a lot line adjustment to environmental design permits and an exception as the chairman has pointed out. It's located off of Marquardt and Fremont roads just south of the intersection of Fourth Street and Second Street. This kind of gives one a better feeling. There is currently a house on a garage on both lots. The current lot lines date from the early 1900s and whoever built the house probably owned both lots. And anyway, part of the house actually occupies both lots, which is a little challenging. The lot line adjustment would change the lot line from its current direction to be perpendicular so that all of Fremont Road is facing one lot and the other lot faces Marquardt. Here's the site configuration, the existing residence is up here. Can you, Mr. Chairman, can you see the cursor when I'm using it to point?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. And then they would be building a new house down here and it would include two off-street parking spaces in this area. The garage entrance for the home, for the new home is here. The upper lot, and you can see the lot line here dividing across the property. The existing garage would be with the upper lot, so they would have a parking space in the garage and at least one on the driveway. The, the, both lots do not meet the 10,000 square foot minimum, but they are both existing lots, which means they're legal and buildable. Staff has worked with the applicant to make sure that the, the two lots basically stay the same size. So that there is not going to be a change. For natural open space, the lower lot meets the requirement. The upper lot however is a little bit short, it's about 700 square feet short of the required minimum. But as you can see, both lots do comply with the minimum lot coverage. The, the, both building sizes also conform, they're both under the limit. The lower lot will have two resident parking and two guest parking. The upper lot, because it's an existing structure and we're just looking at renovating the existing structure, there's no requiring, a requirement to provide guest parking. Staff did look at a couple of options to do that and though having a guest parking up on Fremont, all things being equal could be a good idea. The impacts to the project, the addition for retaining walls impacts to trees and the fact that the road is narrow and it just didn't seem to make sense to staff, so we are not recommending that the commission consider that. The, the, the exception for building setbacks is for the upper lot. It's current, it's required to have a 20-foot front setbacks, the existing setback is about 1.1 feet and we are proposing that that just stay as is, the building is existing. Now the side yard adjacent to the pedestrian path, and I'm going to go back just a minute here. Here's the pedestrian path that walks down with stairs. There used to be part of the house that projected right here, that's going to be removed, so the the setback is going to increase from about a foot to almost six feet. The project is requesting to remove some trees. And I know it's, it's a concern of the neighbors and you'll hear more from them later. I've marked the trees, as you can see, they're all pretty much affected by construction. There's three redwoods here and two up here that will remain. And then I believe this is a California bay over here that's also remaining. These four trees up here in the corner are cherry plum, which is an invasive non-native species. So staff didn't have any concerns with their removal. The neighbors do have a concern with the loss of the redwoods, these two, these two and these five. Working through the design review board, there was a number of issues and one of them was that the design review board thought there should be additional landscaping on the upper side as well. The green circles all represent new trees that are being proposed. The smaller circles are all a variety of shrubs. So as you can see, you've got an open area here, we're doing a sizable amount of landscaping here. Some other stuff around the, the front walk and over along the pedestrian path. On the lower lot, most of the landscaping is concentrated along Marquardt. That's in this area and this area, and there's an existing residence down here. So they've planted some trees in that area to provide additional privacy. It's a case where the zoning to the south, to the bottom of the screen, only has a five-foot setback requirement while the site itself has a 10-foot, so it makes it look like this existing residence is located too close. It's actually legally sighted. Here's a cross-section going down through the upper unit. The mass of the upper unit is essentially staying the same. So if you went out there today, this is kind of the massing that you would see. And as you see, here we've got our 20-foot setback line and the 30-foot maximum height line, as you can see, the building complies with that. This is what the proposed structure will look like. There is, they've removed a, a, a building extension here and a room addition over on this other side. Unfortunately, the they didn't, weren't able to get the, the story poles posted for this point, this point and this point. But as you can see, the building is basically the same height. Here's a view from the, the backside showing how the property will be. Here's the existing garage, the driveway goes up over here and the, the, the upstairs unit would be the new unit, the accessory unit is down here. Here's for the lower Marquardt unit, a cross-section. As you can see, it complies with the 30-foot maximum height and does comply with a 20-foot step back by having additional variation to the front elevation, and I'll point that out to you in a moment. This projects out, all this area is back, this is out. So as you can see, there is a lot of good variation on this unit. They've, they've kind of given it a mountain architecture style which staff thought made sense, given the project's location. And on the, the east elevation, the side that is closest to that neighbor, these are the window locations, two into the hallway and three into the hallway in the upper part. When the DRB reviewed this, they thought the lot line adjustment and site design what made sense and was an effective use of the site. They recommended replacing the proposed tree species and that has been done, that's part of the plan. And they also asked to incorporate additional landscaping on the upper lot, which as we pointed out earlier, the applicant has done. Staff prepared a, there was an earlier initial study done in 2020. We received a lot of public comments and requested additional information from the applicant. So we prepared to revise initial study. It identified four potential impacts, biology from potentially nesting birds in the trees. Two related to cultural resources. One related to geology and soils and one related to hazards. We circulated the initial study for public review from August 14th to November 3rd. We received one comment on the document. None of the comments received modified the analysis and none of them addressed a need for additional mitigation measures. The commenter had concerns that some additional information should have been included in, for past projects. And then they had some corrections to some of the background information. And those have been made, those are in the final initial study that the commission has been presented. Just to kind of highlight some of the, the findings. My original attempt was to put all this on one screen, but you'd end up with 500 words on a PowerPoint and nobody will ever read it. These are the permit findings that are laid out in the staff report for the environmental and design review permits. Findings for the exception, staff believes that all the findings can be made and be so documented in the resolution and in the staff report. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution for city council because this project, because of the exceptions and the hillside overlay, it does have to go to council. And we did provide a updated resolution and I do want to apologize for the confusion. And there is a, an erroneous date on page two of, of the findings attached to the resolution. It, we had a July date and it should have actually been a December date. And so when a commission's making a motion, if you could include that in as part of your emotion, that would, emotion, that would be appreciated. And then we also wanted you to approve the lot line adjustment, the environmental design review permits and the exception subject to the conditions of approval. And with that, that completes my staff report and I'm available to answer any questions. I know the applicant has his representative here today as well and I know that he is planning to speak, so I'm done.
Okay, thank you, just as a very quick point of clarification, so we're, we're modifying the resolution that we are looking for a motion against this evening, is that correct?
That is correct, in addition to the corrected resolution, and I apologize for that, there is a date correction in the corrected resolution.
Okay, do I have a copy of that or should I be copying from this particular slide deck?
You, it should have, you should, the commission, commission members should have received it already. Okay, the main, the main change was the resolution that got sent to you didn't have the updated dates. And we had, we updated the general plan conformity findings to match the 2040 general plan.
Okay, got it. Alright, so I'll quickly check my email, okay, so you, you mentioned that the, the applicant themselves has a presentation as well?
Yes, they do.
Okay, applicant, please step forward and share with us what you have.
And he will be, and Mr. Chairman, he will be using my PowerPoint because we didn't want to inflict the same slides over and over again to the commission, so.
Yeah.
Mallard, hopefully you will tell me when you're ready for a next and then I can hit, hit, I can advance the slides.
Sure, thank you Dave. Hi, I'm Millard Artiberry and I'm the project manager for. Hi, I'm Millard Artiberry and I'm the project manager for the applicant team. And I'd like to thank the planning commission for the opportunity to present the latest iteration of our project. Our team would also like to thank our planners, who was first Ellie Guidice, then Dave Hogan. They both provided invaluable feedback for, for us. And they were able to keep us on track despite a lot of challenges. And that included the passing of our applicant team leader, Crystal Luzak. Our design team went through several development iterations with the help of our planners as we moved closer to our first public hearing. And lastly, we'd like to thank the design review board. Their feedback had an enormous impact on the design we have now. We think it's worthwhile to briefly go over the changes we made as the result of the DRB hearings. So on the Marquard property, that's the, um, the new proposed lot that's fronting Marquard. The redesign of the proposed new home on Marquard maintains our original materials palette. And in addition to reducing the overall size of the home by 455 feet, we changed the direction of the roof ridge to be perpendicular to the street. And the result was a design that was more, that had a more home-like feel. We also, uh, by reducing the size of the Marquard home, it allowed us to pull it back to the east, saving two of the redwood trees. Uh, numbers three and four. And in order to provide a step back on each level, we added a balcony on the entry level for the master and deepened the deck on the main level. And by reducing the size by 455 square feet, we were able to dedicate some space at the rear of the house for a patio as well. Dave mentioned previously that we took the front yard setback exception. By pushing, by pushing the house forward, we eliminated a large portion of the driveway, making it easier to comply with the natural state requirement. And this push forward compelled us to switch the guest parking from perpendicular to parallel. And the retaining wall behind it went, went from 10 and a half feet in height at its max to nine foot two at its max. And the height of the retaining walls was, was a big issue during the DRB hearing. And we also covered the face of the wall with felt pocket living wall. And as a result of the DRB input, the Marquard lot is now fully compliant with the gross floor area and natural state requirements. The lot line has now been adjusted, so the lot sizes remain the same. On the landscape plan, the design has been adjusted to have much more of an organic distribution. The tree species was switched to a Western hazelnut. And the tree sizes switched from five gallon to 15 gallon. On the proposed lot that will front Fremont, the remodel of the existing dwelling at Fremont changes the existing vertical board and baton siding with eight-inch horizontal V-channel siding, which is appropriate for a home of that era. And while the 54 Fremont lot remains non-compliant with regards to natural state, our drawing package now includes plans for the remodel of the existing home. The existing structure is the result of several iterations, some of them very poorly constructed. To minimize any additional encroachment into natural state, small poorly built additions were eliminated in the proposed design. The new construction will also require a new foundation. So, um, on the floor plan, you could see, uh, deck over the living space was added for the main level, which does not increase the lot coverage. And on the lower plan, the lower level of the structure is poor, was, or is currently poorly laid out and, and unused. This space transform, transforms very naturally into an accessory dwelling unit without the addition of any floor area. A deck was added for the new proposed unit. And some general notes for the site. The following measures were taken in order to ensure safe, adequate drainage for the lots. A completed BASMAA form has been provided in our latest submission. Our grading design includes two bio-retention basins. Research conducted on Marinmap.org determined there was no report of any subsurface or ephemeral water flow. And our geotechnical investigation found no evidence of subsurface water. So the process of designing and permitting this project began over five years ago with two lots with two separate mortgages owned by one owner, defaulting on those mortgages and the property is going to two separate owners. So thankfully for everyone, the owners agreed to work together to develop the properties. We have been through a lot of iterations with the city over the course of five plus years. But we feel the resulting end product is a very strong proposal. Now, unfortunately, the scheduling changes created conflicts for the rest of the applicant team. And they were unable to attend, but I'll be happy to answer what questions I can understood.
Thank you. Is that, is that the end of your presentation?
I believe it is, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, great. So at this point, uh, to the commission, uh, we'll, we'll ask, uh, both staff and the applicant clarifying questions only. We'll move then to public comment and then we'll circle back for discussion. Just one question of clarification to staff, uh, which is that, um, if I understand correctly, ADUs are permitted by right per state law, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so from what I understand, then from a resolution perspective, we would not, we would, it would not be within our realm to approve or deny on the basis of the existence of an ADU, is that correct?
Given the current, uh, state law and local ordinance, you are correct, sir.
Okay, so that's just a note both for fellow commissioners and public in terms of, when we, when we debate the merits of the project, that essentially the existence of the ADU is, is off limits for, uh, demeriting the project. So at this point, um, other commissioners who have questions of clarification? Feel free to just jump in.
Yeah, I have, I have a quick question. There's, I, I think, um, there was a reference to a walkway. Adjacent to it, what's the walkway? Yeah, up there.
It's this right here. It's part of the original subdivision that it's a 10-foot wide city, city street that has stairs and a steeply stoping walkway with stairs at the other end.
Okay. Got it.
Yes, I guess I'll go next. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you sure? Sorry, we're all kind of stopping all over each other. I had a question about, uh, natural state. So, um, the slide that had, um, proposed and minimum, there was no existing. I just wanted to know, um, if there was, if there was, you know, usually we see existing required proposed. Um, so is there an, is there a metric on what that existing natural open space is? Or do you have vaguely an idea generally with that?
I can, I can pull up the staff report from the design review board. The, the lot line adjustment makes that comparison a little less than helpful. Since all, virtually all of the 52 Fremont lot was natural state because it wasn't developed except for the garage and the driveway.
Yeah.
Uh, most of the lot with 54 Fremont, most of that, about half of that was in natural state as well.
Okay.
If the, if the commissioner feels she needs that information, I will get that for you and have it for you available after a public testimony. Cause I have to close this and I have to open something else.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious. I think that, I, I mean, I, it's just out of curiosity. So if we get it before the end of the meeting, I'd, I'd be, I'd be interested in hearing that number.
Yes, ma'am, I will have it.
Okay, I guess I'll go next. You have a few questions. First of all, I, um, I thought I heard that the trees that were being proposed for replacement of the redwoods were Western hazel nuts. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the species that they've identified.
Okay, and I'm just curious, why wouldn't they be replaced with redwoods somewhere else on the lot?
That's a probably an excellent question for the applicant. I think they were attempting to find, uh, replacement trees that fit within the context of a understory tree under, for the redwoods up along the north coast. As to whether or not they had an actual discussion on that, I think the applicant would do best to answer that. And while redwoods are nice, they aren't always a very good landscape tree because they get to be so big. But there are places here that those could be planted if the commission is interested.
Okay.
I also think Commissioner Privatoli, their root system goes out, not down. So sometimes on a hillside, they're not ideal, but we've seen them in hillsides. I also know that two of the design review board members are, um, very enthusiastic landscape architects. Commissioner Lou Mersky can probably attest to that. I'm sure there is, there was a lot of discussion about that in the DRB meeting.
Okay, and I mean, can we hear from the applicant? Is that allowed right now in during this session?
Yes, it is.
Good. Well, I'm not the arborist or the landscape designer, but I, in addition to what has already been mentioned, I, I can point out that I believe that the Western hazelnut will develop quicker. And, uh, you'd have a more, uh, mature landscape faster than with redwoods.
Okay, great, thank you. My next question is about drainage. I actually went out to the site for the second time, since this is the second time we've, we've discussed this site. And I saw that the, uh, there was a large drainage pipe along that walkway. And I noticed in, um, I think two of the letters from the public that, uh, sometimes that walkway itself is used in an ad hoc manner to drain water. I guess my question is, was, was drainage, uh, was a drainage study done or is that yet to be done? And are, are there any concerns around drainage? That we should talk about?
Well, the, uh, commissioner, the, the drainage pipe in the walkway is technically off-site. Up the canyon off to the left of this diagram, there is a, uh, it's not a canyon, but it's a ravine that does channel water down across this part of the site. One of the designs that I know the applicant is looking at is coming up with some way to focus that water around, around the unit. Drainage was looked at. The current, uh, bio-retention requirements are being met by the existing bio-retention basins, but that doesn't. The bio-retention basins, as you know, don't address, uh, you know, majors, the runoff from major storms. They aren't designed to do that. It's designed to, to collect water from the more common storms. Yes, it was looked at. Yes, it was evaluated. I'm not sure if a member from Public Works is available today to answer more questions. I'm near the limit of my knowledge of drainage plans.
Okay. Unfortunately. That's okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that it was considered. It sounds like it was.
Yes, sir, it has.
And I can, I can add, Commissioner Privatoli, I just, um, one of the things that we look at when we're looking at drainage and drainage impacts is, you know, assuring that the, um, additional, um, structure is not making things worse. There's definitely a need to address existing drainage patterns. And like Dave was saying, um, the applicant, you know, made an effort to kind of work around the house and provide improvements that would, that would serve to assure that drainage is going, you know, in, in around the house and not result in impacts on the structure itself. But in terms of the obligation for the property owner is to reduce the amount of, to, to minimize the amount of water that's running off as a result of the structure. And they have done that with, with both drainage improvements and the bio-retention. And, and Public Works did see this and they felt comfortable with what they were being, what was being proposed.
Okay, great, thank you. My next question is about the cultural resources. Could you just elaborate on what cultural resources are being impacted?
Well, there, whenever you do excavation, there's a possibility that you might find something that nobody knows is there. That mitigation measure is really just, uh, kind of an insur- an insurance policy to recognize that if prob- probably tribal cultural resources are identified during construction and excavation, that they will be addressed properly and respectfully.
Okay, so there's no known existing cultural resources?
The, uh, the, the tribes that were contacted had no concerns with the site. I've been out on the site several times and the type of elements on site that I would expect to attract, uh, you know, sustained use or habitation, I didn't see on the property. And so that combined with the fact that we just don't know that we're do, we're doing some fairly, you know, fairly deep excavation for the lower unit. Staff just wanted to be safe.
Got it. And then my last question is, uh, around access for emergency vehicles, particularly during fire. Uh, I know that this neighborhood is basically inaccessible by large fire trucks and, uh, and then also the end of Fremont, I don't believe has, uh, a point of egress like an escape route. So people have to come down Fremont, but I think they could, um, actually branch off and go onto one of the other streets to get down off the hill, uh, instead of having to go past this residence. But I'm curious, um, if there are any additions to, uh, the street or the neighborhood that would benefit from a fire safety perspect, cause of, of benefit from a fire safety perspective.
Uh, for the, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, you know, one of the reasons, um, that the applicant had proposed this lot line adjustment is because the, you know, have, providing access to the residence itself is easier when you're coming up Marquard. Our fire, um, department, when we routed this, they, they agreed this is a better solution than having a lot lines that are more, um, length, you know, longwise. So this provides an opportunity to access this, this additional lot from the lower part of the site. Marquard, you know, you have access from one side and then you continue going straight, you can access, you know, you end up going out the other way. So there's no, no, uh, worry about being stuck in a dead-end street. So this is actually a better solution. I'm in terms of the existing residents, the existing residences there. The thing that's happening now is that they're improving the building, they're providing, um, opportunities for that parking. Right now, those are two separate parcels owned by two property owners. And the garage is actually, um, provides, is not, they're not tied together. So with this configuration, the residents that's there now gets to take advantage of a garage that previously was not committed to that lot. So it improves the ability to access the property. And again, from a lot design perspective, the fire department felt this design was a better design, um, in terms of fire safety. The other thing that I wanted to add is that there is, there are a couple of higher hydrants nearby. And as with all new homes nowadays, they're going to have to meet current fire rating standards. You know, our standards are getting tougher and tougher. And so, um, what you see with the development of a new residence is far more improved in terms of, you know, the durability and ability to, to, you know, I mean, wildfire is always, you know, you kind of, you, we really try to address how, um, how the, you know, how trying to think of the right word. It's it's sorry, I can't think of the right word, but in any case, there the
Resiliency.
Yes, thank you. So the code, you know, really is is has been getting you know, more aggressive about trying to assure that new new construction is is more durable.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I've got just a couple of quick questions. One, you mentioned that both buildings are under the maximum allowable size. And and is that maximum allowable size smaller because the size of the lot is below 10,000? Or is that maximum size the same as it would be on a full size lot?
That is an excellent question. Maximum size. It's based upon the current lot. So you've got the 2,500 square foot base, and then you add additional on 10% of the lot size. So this, these amounts are less than would be if the lot was 10,000 square feet in size.
So it's so the maximum allowed is less than the maximum load would be if they were 10,000 square feet?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. Second question, the the ADU, does that not require more parking?
Changes to state law have indicated that you don't have to provide parking for ADUs.
And and finally, in in reading a bunch of the documents prepping for the meeting, I noticed where a lot of places it was mentioned that it was required that three trees be planted for every one that was removed. And first, is that right? And second, is that being followed here?
That is the city's requirement or policy that when you remove large trees, you have to replace them. There is a system by where you get to count the trees that you plant on site, in this case, the ones with the green circles. And then you pay an in-loof fee to the city for the trees that you can't plant on site. And that's and that's an existing requirement, and that's 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 also a standard for the city.
Got it. Great. Thanks very much.
And yeah, I would I'd like to add that we also, you know, we rely on our DRB to provide input on that because there are, you know, ideally you get a three to one replacement, but sometimes that's just not the best thing for the new tree, and it's not the best thing for existing trees. The watering that's required sometimes will have a negative impact. So I think we normally try to push for as much replacement as possible. But also, we want to be realistic and you know, it's all on a case by case basis. What is doable? What is the right the right solution for that site?
Understood. Thanks very much. All right, do we have any other questions of clarification from the commission? Okay, hearing none. I will now open the public hearing and I'll ask staff to open up public comments. Leslie, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. Let's start again. So if you wish to speak on this item and you are not phoning in, use the raise the hand icon found by hovering your mouse for the bottom of the screen. And if you are phoning in, please press star nine to raise your hand. And when I call on you, you press star six to unmute. And the first speaker is phone number ending in two nine nine five. And you will have three minutes.
Good evening. This is Victoria Dewett. This is not Sausalito where views are king and tall trees that block views are considered undesirable and development is allowed on every inch of steep hillside, resulting in the slide that occurred in 2019 in Sausalito, where duplex slid into a neighboring house and required evacuation of 50 additional residences. In San Rafael, we value our hillside topography. And in 1992, I witnessed the city council's unanimous adoption of our award winning hillside design guidelines, which have been successful in achieving the goal of protecting our hillsides while still allowing for sensible development. Hillside projects must display sensitivity to the natural hillside setting. And a portion of the site is required to remain in its natural state. This natural state requirement is an important feature of hillside development in San Rafael. And the city council decided to maintain control over any exceptions by requiring their approval for only those few projects that meet specific criteria. As Alicia Guditz stated in her letter to the applicant after receiving a pre-application for this project, she said, quote, "The proposed lot line adjustment can only be approved if you can demonstrate that both lots will meet the natural state requirement," end quote. In the staff report for the design review board meeting on November 19th, 2019, staff did not support an exception to the natural state requirement, nor did the design review board. Since adoption of the hillside design guidelines, all new development on this hillside have complied with the natural state requirement, including 31 Upper Fremont built in 1997, 75 Upper Fremont built in 2004, and 79 Upper Fremont also built in 2004, and 38 Upper Fremont approved a year ago complied with the natural state requirement. These plans do not qualify for an exception to the hillside development standards. This project does not retain more of its site in a natural state. It doesn't protect significant trees. It shows a lack of sensitivity to the natural setting by hacking away at a grove of redwood trees that have graced this neighborhood for many years and were the main attraction for the original owners of this property. I urge you to deny this project as presented to you this evening. I'd also like to comment on attachment B. There are several references to a conceptual design review on December 8th, 2018. That was for 38 Upper Fremont, not this project. Also referred to a DRB meeting on December 8th of 2020. No such meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wishes to speak on this item, again, please raise your hand. If you're phoning in, please use the star nine key. And if you are not, if you can use the raise the hand icon. So the next speaker is from phone number ending in seven four three two. You have three minutes. You can unmute yourself by yes, star six.
Okay, I'm Steve Thompson, living at 59 Fremont Road. If I can just see the council move their head up and down, so I know that you can hear me. Am I being heard? Yes or no? Just move your head up and down, please, so I know you're being heard. I don't see anybody moving.
Yeah, they're moving. You're heard. Yes, I'm speaking.
Okay, good. They can hear me. Okay, good. I have a significant interest in this development. There we go. A little bit of little delay there. Sorry. Okay. So I have a immediate interest in this property. I am the house at the dead end of Fremont Road. That means any development that occurs on 54 Fremont is going to severely impact me one way or another. I am very perturbed about some of the comments I've heard from investigations or reviews from particularly Dave Hogan, who mentioned about the lack of any presence of water on the property at 54 and 52 Fremont. Anybody, and apparently staff has come up here to look. I don't know if they're looking up or sideways, but they're not looking down. Because there is clearly water from the aquifer that begins up the hill, draining off the hill, down the pipe, and it intersects right at the point of Mark Ward Avenue. There's moisture all over the sidewalk there or the curb there. There is most definitely water and an aquifer that impact the foundation plans entirely. I've spoken to Scott Stevens at Miller Pacific Engineering, who confirmed that the boards that were done some time ago were nowhere near deep enough to access or identify the water source. So you so the job is not being done. I'm not against a nice built development for 54 Fremont rebuilding. I'm not against the idea of it. But it has to follow the rules. We all have to follow the rules. And there's clear violation of that. My second point is going to be addressing the parking. Now, I understand with new state lines, state guidelines, everybody's going to take full advantage of that to the extent that they can. I've lived up here for 30 years. I've seen how tenants have moved into the house. I saw when a group of four young contractors moved in with their large trucks, pinching me into my driveway, not even able to get out of my house at times. It ended up in threats and all kinds of other problems. So by allowing this dwelling unit, you're inviting another tenant on a property that's already stressed with the occupancy that would be allowed. So I completely object to the I the IADU. It does not fit on this site. I also heard that from Dave Hogan that quarter footage was removed from the property at the lower property on Mark Ward. And but up at a patio with that in the back, so you've not saved 455 feet, you've just replaced it with patio in the back. So I see a lot of circumventing of the rules to accommodate your to accommodate your approving this project. I strongly object to this project, and I would like to meet with whatever officials would come up to the property site and speak to me directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else wishes to speak on this item? Again, please raise your hand. And the next speaker is Stacy Clement. Stacy, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So my name is Stacy Clement, and I live at 57 Fremont Road, which is directly above the proposed project. So we're the second to last house before the dead end on Fremont Road. And the front of our house faces the project, and the only thing separating our house from the project is our driveway in the street. Just so you know where we're located. And almost every day, we use the public pathway that was also mentioned that runs directly adjacent to the project because it takes us from our house straight to the end of the hill to go downtown. And I want to mention that the reason that we bought our house was specifically because of the beautiful redwood grove that we get to look out outside of our house from our bedroom window when we wake up, our living area window, and my office window, which I work out of every day, and our kitchen windows. We would be extremely disappointed and disheartened to see any of the redwoods being removed, given that we specifically sought out and chose the small neighborhood hill of San Rafael because of the redwood grove it sits within. When we searched for a house, we found that there were not many areas of San Rafael that have redwoods in contrast to other areas Marin like Mill Valley or Larkspur or some of the other towns. So we would think that the city of San Rafael would want to preserve this precious area. The other major concern we have is the street that we live on is incredibly narrow and have to climb a hill to get to our house. And it's a dead end once you get to the top of the hill, as has been mentioned. There's extremely limited parking, and if there are cars parked in the few spaces where someone can actually park, it makes turning around when someone reaches the dead end in front of our house almost impossible to turn around in and leave our street. So we see cars and trucks that come up the street multiple, multiple times a day and struggle to figure out how to get back down. Sometimes they'll actually attempt to use a portion of our driveway, whether or not we have cars parked in it because there's simply no other way to turn around. And actually, one time we witnessed one of these cars who'd made a wrong turn onto our street and had to turn around actually hit our car in our driveway, and we had to get it repaired. So this is already a very difficult transportation situation, and we fear that this will only increase traffic, reduce the parking, and make all of this even more difficult due to the fact that there's going to be multiple residences with multiple sense of occupants plus the ADU. Lastly, as was mentioned, there is concern over fire safety and access all along our road. And I understand that there was a comment that this lot line configuration was advised by the fire department to have improved access from a fire safety standpoint. But my impression was that this was only with respect to this property because I can't imagine a situation where this would in any way improve fire safety for any other residences further up the hill for the reasons I stated before. It seems like it would hinder it. And when there isn't parking, trucks and cars have no choice but to block the road while they're doing whatever they're doing. And the residents trying to go home or leave get stuck trying to figure out who's blocking it, which, you know, is frustrating, but it also hinders the fire safety. So that's our other concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand found at the bottom of your screen. If you are phoning in and have not yet spoken, you may dial star nine. Raise your hand icon or star nine. And I see no other speakers from the public.
Great, thank you. All right. So at this time, I will close the public hearing and we'll bring the discussion back to the commissioners. I think at this point, what I'll do is I'll walk through each commissioner one by one. I'll call out your name, see what comments or additional questions that you have based on public discussion as well as just anything that's been brewing in your mind. And then I'll circle it back to a more roundtable discussion where we can kind of just air out certain thoughts and kind of converse back and forth. Excuse me. So I'll start with Commissioner Harris.
No comment or questions at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Hinman?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner LeBermersky?
No question. I'll save my comments for later.
Commissioner Mercado?
I mean, I think we've heard a lot, a little some issues about the fire safety. And I was trying to go back and look at the staff report if it was discussed. I guess I'm a little bit stumped with how the existing road and fire safety standards are impacted or would impact this project. I don't know if we discussed that or not. I don't feel like we did. We can either deliberate that if that's something staff wants to address, but that's one issue that's still jumped out at me a little bit just for kind of staff's consideration. And the other one was the drainage. Kind of sounds like it's an offsite drainage issue and concern, but I don't totally understand it. So those are the two areas that I'm still not totally feel like I have my my head wrapped around completely.
Good, good points. Staff, do you want to address the the questions raised if able to at this point?
I I so I heard the commissioner with concerns about emergency access and drainage. Is that, did I get that correct, sir?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. The emergency access for the upper unit, the existing unit, is problematic today and nothing, this project isn't really going to solve the problem.
You want to show us the site plan while we while we talk about this, please?
Of course.
Thank you.
Let's see. Hang on, let me find one that's got a little, would this be a good one? No?
Yeah, it's the one with the topography and then, yeah, I mean, it's good to see Mark Card in the other streets because I think it gives us context. But, yeah, I think it's just, you know, understanding in relation to the neighbors too, like, given Stacy Clement's. Maybe the other one, what what do you guys think?
We can go back and forth.
We can go back.
I think we need to go back and forth, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, start with the assessment map. That'd be helpful.
Okay, the pedestrian walkway is this area right here, this little strip. And there is a little knuckle on Mark Ward kind of And there is a, a little knuckle on Mark Ward kind of run into this residence. Or I guess it's right here. So, and Commissioner Saudi, I do have the information on the existing natural open state. Natural state, if you are still interested in the information at some point.
Yeah, whenever, whenever it's opportune.
Okay. So you do have this, the drainage that comes here. It comes down into the street. Some of it goes down the pedestrian path. Some of it goes this way. It's the existing drainage pattern. There, there's really it's drainage that starts offsite and ends up offsite. So the project itself isn't necessarily changing it. I think the project potentially will be affected by it. But that's something for the designers to figure out as they go through the actual building plan and the final construction stage. Emergency access, you know, I, I've driven up Fremont several times myself. And I really don't, personally, I don't like driving up to the edge. I think the advantage of putting the house down here is Mark Ward is a much wider road. It's much easier to get out. So right now, in theory, you could have someone build a house where that existing garage is, which means you'd add another house. You've got the existing residence here. I know people use the part of the driveway for this unit to turn around with. But that's just the way it is. Coming all the way down here, you don't really have much of an option until you get this point here to either go this way in Mark Ward or this way over to west. It's, uh, from an environmental review perspective, the project isn't creating the problem. The problem exists. It's not really solving it either. Insofar as the, the road is the way it is. And try and requiring the applicant to widen the road reduces the amount of natural state is probably going to result in more retaining walls.
David, I have a, I have a follow-up question to this. Is, I mean, Public Works and Fire Department, everybody's looked at this obviously, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And over five years, they've looked at it. So
Yes.
I think you, what you said brought up a good point. One is that, like, changing, changing the split here helps relieve some pressure on Fremont, which is like, I think that, that helps the situation from the commenters to date. But the drainage, again, like, I guess as we're looking at this site in the same way, is, is the drainage changing at all? Because I would assume that, you know, everything drains in one direction. So we're not, by adding a new home, there's probably additional onsite drainage that's required, right? And that that would help mitigate the offsite drainage? Is that, is that a safe to assume?
The, the project is going to be required to install bio retention basins for the new house. They're also proposing to add it for the existing house, even though that's not required. So you will get, the existing drainage will be addressed by the proposed bio retention basins from part of the roof of the existing structure. For the new structure, the roof runoff will be addressed in the same way. So the total amount, the total effect on drainage is probably not going to be a, a big difference between what it is now. In theory, it could be a little less, but it's not going to be any worse based upon the evaluation by the Public Works Department and the, the hydrology study and everything that Public Works and Engineering have looked at.
And the project itself is not going to, I mean, there, there is currently, you know, water flows through that that site above Fremont, above the property. And it continues flowing, as David said, down, kind of split down the stairs, pedestrian stairs and then kind of through the middle of the site. It'll, that'll continue to happen. There's nothing about this project that fixes anything and you can't really require the applicants to fix your drainage that is coming from above. So I don't know if that responds to your question, Commissioner Saudi.
I think, I think that helps. I think the main question that I think myself and potentially other commissioners are wondering is how the project is like impacting the drainage throughout, like, the adjacent properties? And it sounds like if there's bio retention that's being installed, that that's helping the overall picture of drainage like on Mark Card and Fremont and, you know, basically handling the rainwater onsite more than it is currently.
I think that's a, that's a fair assessment, Commissioner. The, 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 as you, as you know, the pro, the water runs from up here to down here. And this project is in the middle of it. Would you like to quickly review the natural state? Since I have you, since I have your attention?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna stop sharing and then I'm gonna share again. And I appreciate the commission's patience on this. Here we go. This is the developed lot at fifty-four Fremont. This is from something we sent to the D R B. About fifty-six percent natural state. The undeveloped lot that has the garage is almost ninety percent natural state. So the, the difference in natural state is really the lot coverage of the lower unit and the, the additional parking along Mark Ward. That's really the change. You're going from about ten thousand eight hundred square feet of natural state to about ninety-two hundred.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
I appreciate the commission's patience and I will put this back up again. And I will be quiet till I'm asked another question.
So if, if I may, the, part of the drainage runs down the stairway and part runs down the middle of the, the joint property. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the new proposed residence that strikes me is going to be sitting right on top of where drainage currently happens.
Yes.
And so some of that drainage is going to be diverted. I assume, I assume that's all been evaluated and it's not going to be diverted onto adjoining properties.
That's correct. It would be diverted in a way to end up on Mark Ward.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the joining property is uphill. It wouldn't be going in that direction.
Yeah, and it looks like those retention areas are all down slope of the residence, either residence, right, respectively?
Correct. Commissioner, that is correct. These two here are below the residence. And this is kind of beside the residence and over here above the parking area. This is definitely below.
And there's one at the knuckle where the top of the stairs are, right? There's, it looks like there's three on the proposed residence.
No, there's just two, one here and one here.
It looks like there's a small one right at the porch as well.
Yeah, that's this one right here.
No, just, just at the top of the landing.
Oh, you're right. There's a little tiny one that's not really called, yeah, there's a little bit right here in the landscaping right next to the front door. Sorry, I'm, I missed that one.
No, that's
Good. Vice Chair Pravatelli?
Yeah, this one's very complicated, complicated needless to say. I guess you know, I, I saw that grove of redwood trees earlier today and it is beautiful and they are definitely mature. And so I'm just wondering, how did the project get past the hillside design guidelines with those trees being removed? It's kind of surprising to me. Does anyone know?
Yeah, I mean, what I can say about that is we do, you know, the hillside design guidelines are intended to provide guidance to applicants. And we work through that. You're not always going to get what you, what you hope for. We're, we have two lots. We're, you know, we, we are obligated to allow development on these properties. The applicant chose a solution that staff felt was a good solution, given the circumstances. I mean, the alternative, I guess, could have been that you locate the, the home up slope and reduce the amount of tree removal and, but that wasn't a great solution. So, you know, the solution was result in removal of more trees. And that's, you know, for a variety of reasons. It's to address our requirements, to provide the additional guest parking, to provide the bio retention. I mean, there's a number of different, you know, kind of requirements that you're trying to balance with this project. You heard the applicant say that there was, you know, this has been going on for a while and there have been some challenges and some, you know, submittals and changes. And, you know, as an example, one of the earlier submissions, I mean, you heard one of the commentators mention that, you know, in the earlier letter, we stated that an exception wouldn't be allowed. I mean, their, their original proposal showed a different configuration of that lot line with, you know, a larger unit. And so that, you know, that was what we were trying to push, like, there's, you know, different, different conflicting requirements. And so what we ended up with was a smaller unit. We're, we're seeing a removal of trees, but we're seeing less impacts on natural state for that new lot. So that's kind of where, how we got where we are today.
Yep, that makes sense. Yeah. And I guess just to play sort of devil's advocate a little bit about the fire safety. I understand all the points that were made. Those make sense to me. I mean, do you think one could argue that having a modern, more fire resistant house up in the top part of the existing parcel would help in, improve fire safety in the neighborhood?
You're talking about the one that's already there, the existing residence?
Yeah, like, well, actually, let me, let me clarify my point. I guess if we left, the parcel's the same. And the owner of the, the parcel on the, the lower half where the garage is now decided to build a, a house there that was obviously to code and with modern safety, fire safety standards. Do you think that would, you know, benefit the fire safety of the surrounding neighborhood? Because of the, the new, I mean, I think the point you made earlier was that modern houses are more fire resistant. I agree with that.
Yeah, I think a new home, you know, is required to, you know, to incorporate more fire resistant materials and, you know, sprinklers are now required. I think that locating the residence up slope would then, I mean, there's still that opportunity to do that. But you're losing, you're losing that driveway and garage for the existing residents. And, you know, that, you know, that's the loss there. So yeah, that could, you could, you could keep the lot line kind of where it is and and then you're ending, ending up with a new residence at the top of the hill. You know, we would still require parking for the new residence with all of the, the other requirements, including the guest parking spaces and but, but the other residents would not have, you know, they wouldn't not, they would lose that garage space.
And Commissioner, if I can add in, the applicant is proposing to put sprinklers in the, in the upper unit when they go in and do the conversion and do the renovation. So between that and the exterior materials, it should make it more fire safe than it is now. I mean, the area is what the area is. So I think the, from a fire safety perspective, the improved building with the sprinklers is probably a benefit over, over the house that's there now, clearly.
Right, okay. And then just kind of pulling on that thread a bit, you know, would it be allowed to have a garage and the guest parking down off of Markard? And potentially on the side of the grove, the redwood grove? So those groves, that, that grove could be preserved?
Commissioner, could you be
Access allowed?
Could you, what, I mean, having parking for this unit down here along Mark Ward?
No, the idea is like if we, if we kept the existing parcel the way, the way it is where it's split, you know, horizontally here. Would it be allowed to, would they be allowed to, to put parking down kind of where that twelve is? So they could avoid having to take out that grove of redwood trees in order to meet the parking requirement that have the house up by, up, off of Fremont?
You mean by where eleven is, correct? Because if you kept the lot lines the way they are, then you're, you're, you would have lot eight, which is the circle twelve, that parcel number. That would be one lot which would be developed. And then the other lot would be the existing lot, which is nine slash eleven. So you, they would be able to build a garage there that, you know, that, that would be an option. I don't, I'm not don't, not recalling Dave whether tree removal would be required there. I think it would still be required.
If you put, yeah, they're still gonna lose, you're still going to lose a few trees. Unfortunately, pretty much any, if, and if all you did was put, you know, say for example, the applicant, the property owners agreed they were just going to make a single lot. Then yeah, you could put just, you know, parking down below there. There, I think there is enough for a space or two. But that's not the application, that's not what the app, the property owners
Right.
have requested.
Understood. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, um, yeah, I'm gonna c- cede the floor just with one last comment. The reason I'm, you know, asking about the trees so much is because you know, people in Santa Fala, including myself, love redwood trees. And I noticed that there was a petition that was created with four hundred signatures and a hundred and twenty Santa Fala citizens signed it, you know, with the, the goal of trying to save that grove of redwood trees. So I, I think it is a pretty significant consideration. But thank you.
Thank you. If, could, could you put up the, the slide that shows the trees both will remain and are being removed, please?
This one?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and please note, this is just the lower lot. None of the trees, affected trees are on the upper lot.
Right.
Okay. So thanks for these questions. So let's, let's enter in our, our discussion phase. I want to keep an eye on the specific resolution that we're, we're tasked with essentially adopting or amending. And I, I think that this discussion will help us hash through that. But in case those of you did not receive the email or haven't looked at it yet, the resolution that we're looking at is be resolved that the planning commission of City of Santa Fala does hereby recommend that the city council adopt the I S slash M N D for the project and approve lot line adjustments, environmental designer view permits and exception based on the findings and subject to the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and conditions of approval substantially in the form set forth in attachments A and B respective.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so keep, keep that in mind as we move through the discussion. I think the other piece to keep in mind is that the A D U component, that's a, that's a state law by rights. So we essentially don't have So we essentially don't have, we don't have call to demerit this project based on the existence of the ADU.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. So who wants to kick us off?
Oh, I'll jump in. This is a great project. I too love trees. I think that it's unfortunate that these trees are going to have to be removed, but I also respect property rights. And I think developing this lot is, is a good thing for our community. It increases our housing stock. I think it's a thoughtful design. I think it's attractive. I think it, it will blend into the neighborhood with some time. Maybe a little rough around the edges when it's first built, but landscaping will come in and soften it. And I think it's, I'm fully in favor of this project and allowing all the necessary amendments and exceptions for the project to be approved.
I can go next. I too support this project. I think it's a really thoughtful design. I think there's been years of review on it. And I believe we have thoughtful and committed staff and commissioners and those on the design review board as well. And they've been able to weigh in. I do sympathize with, you know, the removal of the redwood trees. I do think they're a valuable resource to our community. And I also, you know, sympathize with the impact on the neighbors. But, you know, really, what we're doing here is ensuring that there is responsible development within Marin. And I think, you know, as a property owner, they have every right to develop the property. You know, some of the, one of the neighbors commented regarding, you know, part of the reason she purchased the property that she has is, you know, because of this grove. You know, as, as homeowners, we should all be, remember that, you know, when we buy a home, we don't buy the surrounding properties. So every property owner has a right to develop. And, you know, I think that's in part why we have like a three to one replanting requirement in Santa Fel. I, I wish the applicant luck. And I hope that the construction goes smoothly. I think that, you know, some of the concerns brought up about life, safety and parking are going to be mitigated by allowing this resolution and pushing some of that stress onto Markard. So with the additional drainage and some of the traffic and the access concerns being alleviated, I think this will help the area in general. It's just probably going to be a tough couple of years while construction goes on. But I, I propose that we adopt those resolutions.
But I'll jump in with my thoughts. Try to be brief about it to not duplicate. I appreciate staff answering a lot of the questions that I ask because I think there was ambiguity from the community. To Commissioner Saudi's point, I think you have issues from existing conditions and just things that happen that don't necessarily are at the fault of a project, but definitely will impact it. So to that end, I'd recommend that applicant kind of be vigilant with sort of an ongoing mitigation, especially for the drainage, once you have it built up. I don't know if we can actually condition it on it, but we're in such a drought, you're removing these beautiful trees that may be part of that drainage mitigation. So to the extent that's going to impact that lower unit, I think it'd be good to stay active on monitoring that and just be mindful as to what happens. Yeah, I mean, I, I support this. I think it's fine. I think it's pushing it to the extent that they're doing this adjustment to maximize the lots and reducing the natural state. Being very mindful of the community's concerns about that. But I think this is the direction that these kind of more challenging sites are going in. I kept thinking about this project and what would happen in a few years once SB nine is kicked in and we don't have the ability as a community to raise our concerns and raise these issues. So I appreciate the applicant continued after five years. And like I said, I would hope that the three to one ratios met. I would, I think it'd be great if they want to push that more in the landscaping purview. I defer that to the DRB and the landscape folks. I'm sure they gave you plenty of ideas. But overall, no, I think it's fine.
Vice Chair, you, you were gonna say something next?
Oh, yeah, I guess I'll go. Yeah, you know, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, which, and when I, you know, started looking at it, I was against it, but I think everyone's arguments are compelling. But when I vote, I would like to request that the trees on site be replaced with redwoods somehow. And I think that, you know, hopefully that'll please the neighbors. I also agree that it will probably help with drainage. And incidentally, I looked at the rate of growth for redwoods just during the meeting. And they can grow up to three feet per year. Evidently, there's, they're very fast growing when they have enough water. And so I'm thinking to Commissioner Mercado's point that, you know, if you can, you know, replace them and tap into that water, particularly around the bio retention, retention basins, then they will grow quickly. And we won't have as large an impact on the biome and the aesthetic of the neighborhood as we would if they were replaced with the Western hazel nuts. So hopefully that's a good solution.
One of the things that you can do, if there's, once the commission is ready for a motion, is that you would be able to either make a motion with that condition or if the motion's made prior to your, if somebody can beat you to that punch, you could recommend an amendment, amended motion. So just wanted to make sure you knew that that was an option.
Great, thank you.
I'll, I'll win just briefly. I too will vote in, in favor of this. I didn't start out that way. And it's been a little bit of a journey to get here. But I think that it's, yeah, it's a decided improvement over what's there. I share the concern over the redwoods. I would support amending the motion or adding to the motion. The notion of replacing what's being removed with new redwoods rather than something else. Yeah, I think that, you know, having, having a, a new structure uphill is going to be an enormous improvement over what's there currently. Increasing housing supply by, you know, building new. So we'll have two new structures, well, three new residences with the ADU. There are an awful lot of trade offs here. And I think that this is, this is, this is a project worth, worth pursuing.
Commissioner Harris?
I agree with this project moving forward. I just wonder if there's any way to further take into consideration the concerns of the neighbors. I don't know if that can be somehow written into any amended thing that we want to put forward. But I just think because of how small it is, and I, I also live on a pretty small street, it can be very troubling and sometimes dangerous. So I just would want to make sure that everyone nearby is considered. So, thank you.
I think, think of also about an amendment or a condition that you might want to add if you choose to make a motion. Have I skipped over anybody? Okay, just myself? Okay. Yeah, I, I think myself, I'm also in favor of the, of the resolution as it stands. I think for the previously expressed property rights arguments, I think that's, I think the biggest consideration for me. I think the other thing to consider, I think, bigger picture is that, you know, we have a slate of state laws that are coming down that are taking more and more control away from local communities to make these decisions. Part of it is because we have been so reticent to build the appropriate level of housing or volume of housing within our communities that has been prescribed to us by the state through, through state law. And again, these are all legislators we vote for. So, you know, this is the framework of the law that we've all agreed upon from a, at a state level. So we have to basically do our part within the community. Yeah, I understand that it is uncomfortable to make, to make additional space, but it's also uncomfortable, far more uncomfortable for folks that are homeless or who cannot afford housing. So I think we also have to balance, you know, you know, personal discomfort versus sort of like the, the bigger picture, I think. And I think, you know, this, this project, I think a, a theme that I've heard from a number of commissioners is the thoughtfulness that's been put into, you know, considering and preserving as much of the natural state as, as possible while still, I think, being also mindful of the financial considerations of the property owners trying to reposition this asset so that they can, you know, they don't, they're not just sitting on a property that they cannot live on or, you know, make some sort of return on their. And I, you know, I really just hate to be in a community where we hold people hostage financially out of, out of a sense of sort of personal comfort, even when we have numerous expert reports that have indicated that, you know, they've, they've signed off on the fire safety component. They've signed off on the environmental review, et cetera. You know, I think there's an easy danger to say that, you know, I know more than the experts. I think that's a, a big issue that we're facing sort of broadly across the country in the first place. But I think we have to trust the building code folks and the fire folks who look at this stuff every single day and trust their, their thoughts and assessments on this. And if they say that, you know, they're not concerned about it, then I think we have to just trust the experts in this particular case. So I think those are, that's my thoughts on this. I think at this point, I can entertain a motion. I know that we have a few sort of potential amendments or conditions on the table. I do want to give people opportunity to express those if they so wish. So I think, you know, I can line up what I think that I've heard. One is, one potential amendment is around, what is it? The swapping in of redwoods as the, as the replacement tree or identifying ways for the redwoods to be there. I think I heard Commissioner Harris also mentioned consideration of some of the neighbor, the neighbor requests. Maybe you could just sort of maybe detail a little bit more what you're thinking about that from a potential amendment perspective?
I think I'm going to withdraw that.
Fair enough. Okay, so I think we've laid all the cards out on the table. Have I overlooked or missed anybody's thoughts or potential amendments?
I just want to remind, this is a recommendation to the city council, correct?
Correct.
Yes, Commissioner, that is correct. And this project will also be going back to the full, full DRB just to make sure that all the issues. So if the commission is interested in adding redwoods, that would be a good recommendation to make for the DRB to consider. And that would implement the commission's concerns with the DRB, which I think would be appropriate.
Yeah, I, I have a, can we discuss that? Yeah, I, I definitely understand where we're coming from with the redwoods and I agree with it. I think though, to like, where I'm having a hard time with it is probably best described with what Chair Sumit is describing. I mean, we have two very qualified and very enthusiastic landscape architects on it that sit on the DRB and I can see Commissioner Mercado smiling.
You may want to make a, maybe we want the motion to go and see if there's even enough votes.
Yeah, I mean, I agree.
Before we deliberate, just saying.
Before we deliberate, yeah.
Yeah, it's an option.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, like, in terms of like adding that, adding that note, I mean, my comfort, I'm, I'm torn because I do think we, we should, if redwoods is the right thing to do, it should be the right thing to do, but I don't think I'm qualified to make that decision. I think there are people that have reviewed this project that are much more qualified. And I, I would like to make sure that that we're putting forward recommendations that make sense for the property and for the species of trees. And, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into it.
Could, could I suggest on that and to Commissioner Harris's point of the neighbors' concern? Because I agree with you. I, I don't know anything about trees, so I, I could impose these and have no idea. But it may be that the neighbors that are concerned, maybe the idea is that we want the consideration of the redwood trees to be, if, if not re, if not planted, then at least some, some sort of document, whether it be a landscape memo or part of the file, part of the project file that the neighbors can see that would explain why the proposed tree, and maybe it's in there. I haven't reviewed all the landscaping plans, but that would be the best kind of new tree to be planted as a way to alleviate our concerns and some of the neighbors' concerns of this grove being gone.
That sounds fair to me. Yeah, I think whoever needs to evaluate it, I'm, I'm sure in the last five years, it's been, it's been questioned. So I'd be curious.
So Commissioner Mercado, would that be, would you consider that to be part of the, the resolution itself? Or maybe, you know, perhaps, Mr. Hogan, do you know if that exists anywhere within the existing documentation in terms of that sort of rationalization?
No, I don't think any of the existing documentation that came in with it specifically discussed whether or not planting some redwoods on the site might make sense. Clearly, I could, I can see a couple of places where redwoods might work. But for the screening trees around the lower residence, I don't think there's a place to put them that would work. Maybe up below the garage, there's a spot. I think I understand what the, the commission's concerns are. And I think that the recommendation to the design review board is, you know, is really the right approach. I can pretty much guarantee that the design review board will jump on it. And I will guarantee that I will flag it for them and make sure that they understand the commission's concerns.
And I want to clarify that the resolution that you're passing is a recommendation to the planning commission.
To the city council.
Sorry, yes, to the city council. And you can do a separate recommendation when it goes back to the DRC, which is, doesn't need to be in the resolution to council, but can be communicated by staff to the DRB.
Add something to that, Chair Sumit? I think in terms of a motion, it sounds to me like there are a number of, at least a, a couple of commissioners that are interested in a motion that would include at least evaluating either keeping the redwoods or replacing redwoods. And I think that what might help is, I would actually recommend that a condition of approval would be that the applicants, prior to going back to the DRB for a final design review, that the applicants prepare a revised plan in collaboration with an arborist that identifies locations for either preservation or installation of new redwoods and allow the design review board to weigh in on that recommendation by the arborist and landscape architect.
I'm gonna, sorry, interject. It's going to DRB next without a conditions. So it would be, I, my thought would be to be what the planning director said as a recommendation to the DRB.
And since everybody is talking, I'm gonna to wade in. I understand the community development direct, the community development director's concern. I also understand where the planning manager's coming from. Maybe the way to do it would be to do two separate motions. The first on the recommendation to the DRB to make sure that the commission is happy. And then make a motion on the proposed resolution on, on the, on the project. And that might make sure that, or ensure for the, for the commissioners that everybody's issues are being included. Just a suggestion.
That sounds like a win-win.
So is this going to the DRB first? Sorry, I'm kind of confused.
Yes, it will go back to the full DRB at some point after the, the commission makes a decision. I don't have the.
We just heard the opposite from the planning manager. We heard.
No, she, we were, we were all confused. No, she, we were, we were all confused, me included. It's, it happens after a couple of hours on an item. No, it's going to DRB first and then it's going to council, I promise. And if the planning manager says different, I'm just gonna ignore it.
Happy to make the motion that we make a recommendation to the DRB that they consider the project with an arborist involved in evaluating. I should have just said what Ally said, but in evaluating sort of either keeping the redwoods or planting new redwoods in lieu of the existing. That would be one motion and then the second, and then the second motion would be that I, we make a, a resi- a resolution to approve or a motion to approve the resolution with the corrected date to the city council. Those are the two you need, correct?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't think we even need to specify the corrected date in the latter because I think it's actually corrected in the updated document. Is that correct?
It's o- it's okay. We'll just, okay, we'll just, it's okay. We'll, we'll, we'll get there.
If we have to come back on that for that alone.
Okay, so for, um, I don't know, Robert's rules go on this one. Uh, do we?
Yeah, let's start. Uh, can you, so Commissioner Mercado, did you make the motion? Okay, can you restate the first motion?
The first motion would be approving the project subject to the applicant working with an arborist to evaluate or prepare a report on keeping the redwood trees or planting new redwood trees and seeking that that be reviewed by the DRB.
Sorry, th- this is just a recommendation to the DRB. I don't think there's approval attached to this first one.
Yes.
Recommending applicant, okay. Um, and is there a second for that motion? Lubarski, thank you. Okay. So with that, um, so this is, we're gonna do a roll call on this first motion, which is a recommendation um for the applicant to work with an arborist to, to look into the possibility of retaining the redwood trees onsite and or replanting them onsite as a replacement tree. Harris? Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Lubomirski? Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi? Commissioner Previtali?
Aye.
And Commissioner Sumit, uh, sorry, Chair Sumit. Okay, thank you. And then the second motion was to approve or to recommending um approval to the city council to adopt the mitigated NIG deck and to approve the project. That is the second motion and we have a second, a second talk. Again, okay, thank you. All right, so on the resolution recommending approval, Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Lubomirski? Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi?
Aye.
As Chair Previtali?
Yes.
And Chair Sumit?
Yes.
All right. Motion's pass.
Great work, everybody. Believe it or not, we have a second item tonight. I think this one will be a little bit shorter. Um, the second item is a public hearing for the San Rafael twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element. And um the, the project planner for this one is informational report on the twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element and selection of planning representative to the steering committee. So the recommended action here is to accept the report and to select a commissioner to be on the housing element steering committee. So at this point, I will request a staff report.
Thank you, uh, Chair Sumit. I'm just here to uh introduce Barry Miller. Um, I think most of you are familiar with Barry Miller. He has provided a report to the city council on the housing element update. Um, and as part of that report, um, he has been trying to collect a, a group of individuals that would serve on a steering committee. And so that's what he's here for today. So I'll go ahead and allow him to, to, to do the presentation.
Great, thanks, Ally, and good evening, commissioners. This will be a, a shorter item than your last item. And I do want to point out that this is a, uh, not a deep dive into the housing element. We're gonna be coming back to you in a couple of months with a lot of data and a lot of food for thought and a lot of conversation and discussion about housing issues in the city. What we're here to do this evening is simply to solicit a member of, of the commission to serve on a housing element working group. And I do have a couple of slides I'm gonna go through just to provide some context for what we're doing. You may recognize this diagram. It's actually in the general plan and it was something that the commission had asked for, which is to show the relationship of all the different planning documents that we refer to in long-range planning in San Rafael. And you can see on this diagram at the heart of the, uh, the page is the housing element. It is part of the general plan, but it stands on its own as an independent document. It's one of the elements of the plan, but it functions really as a, a, a policy and program guide for housing in the city. And the reason it stands on its own is that it's prepared on a schedule that's set by the state legislature. You can see the other types of plans in the city here on the slide, the area plans, the system plans, strategic plans, and so on. This really is a, a critical part of the city's long-range planning. So, quick overview, it's a required element of every general plan in California. Housing elements have actually been mandatory in California for the last fifty-two years. This is where we express all of our policies for conserving housing, producing housing, and creating more affordable housing in the city. This of all elements of the general plan is the one that is probably the most prescriptive in terms of what we have to cover under state law and the list of what we have to cover continues to grow exponentially over the last few years. I mentioned the eight-year planning period. This is the reason that we didn't do the housing element update when we did the rest of the general plan twenty forty. The schedule for this update is set by the state and we are completing what's called the fifth cycle housing element that runs from twenty fifteen to January of twenty twenty-three. And we're gearing up for the sixth cycle, which will run from January twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. This is the only part of the general plan that's subject to certification by a state agency. In this case, it's the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And the stakes are high for the housing element, meaning that this is an element we really want to have certified. We need to have certified. We um depend on certification to be eligible for state grants and for planning grants and for other types of state funds. And if we are out of compliance, there are legal risks. There is even the risk of losing control of our land use authority and permitting authority. So it's in the interest of both our city and all cities to be in compliance with state housing element law. The element itself includes these different components that you see here on the slide. Pretty much any community you go to, you're gonna have these basic components and evaluation of the last housing element, how we're doing in implementation, an assessment of our housing needs, an evaluation of constraints to building housing, an evaluation of resources which include our housing opportunity sites and financial resources, and then an action program that includes goals, policies, and actions. Uh, I'm not, not gonna go into detail on the schedule here. What I want to point out is that there really are four phases to this project. We're in the first phase right now, which is both reconnaissance, data collection, and doing our needs assessment. We'll be moving into policies and programs in the winter months and then preparing a draft, which will come back to this commission for discussion around June of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, uh, and then on to the council. It's a two-step process to get the housing element certified. First, we get your blessing and the council's blessing in a document that we submit to the state for preliminary review. We get the state's comments and then we revise the document and bring it back to you next fall for formal adoption. So there, there are almost two rounds of public review once we develop the document, which creates kind of a long process for vetting and approving the housing element. Uh, so the, the um city council authorized the creation of a working group to guide this process. I wanna emphasize this is not the kind of the, the heavy lift of the general plan twenty forty steering committee. As you know, that committee met for two and a half years and had uh twenty-five three-hour-long meetings and was very intensely tasked with doing a lot of work on policy development. The wor- the role of the working group, I would say, is a little bit, well, a lot lighter than that. It's a much condensed process. We're asking for the working group members to commit to attending six meetings between November and May. Initially, these meetings will be on Zoom. They're two hours long. You can see the composition of the working group here. Twelve members rep- primarily representing housing interests and we're particularly focused on the needs and interests of our lower-income community, our non-English-speaking community, and folks with special housing needs as we um think about who will be on the working group. That's the last slide. I do want to point out today um that we are um going to be beginning our advertising very soon for a community meeting on October twenty-seventh. That's a Wednesday from six-thirty to eight o'clock PM. This will be a uh community meeting on Zoom where there'll be an opportunity to learn more about the housing element and to participate in some discussion and chat about the housing element in a Zoom meeting format. We've also launched a website, sanraffelhousing.org, where there's additional information about the project and links to documents. You'll be hearing more about this meeting and other meetings in the coming months. So I'm going to close with that. We do want to provide an opportunity this evening for public comment and then hear from the commissioners about your appointment to the working group. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Barry. Uh, Ally or staff, anything to add to that?
I have nothing to add. I just wanted to be available in case you wanted to get a understanding of procedures, how to take in the public comment and have the nomination.
Okay, got it. Do, do you wanna, do you wanna walk through that um now before we open up to public hearing or do you wanna wait?
Sure, um, well, uh, you can, um, I, I would recommend that you ask questions if you have questions. And then open up the public hearing at that, that point. Once the public hearing's over, um, you would, um, you know, you would open up opportunities for nominations. Um, there is opportunity for self-nominations as well. I've been seeing that in the past. And then you would, uh, once a nomination is made, you would take vote on it, vote on the nominations. If there's multiple nominations, you would take each one individually.
Easy. Thank you. Are there questions of staff from the commissioners at this point?
I'll, I'll go first. Nice, nice presentation. Um, I gotta ask, cause that's the way I'm wired. Have any cities, like you say the doom and gloom, have any cities actually been taken over their planning? Purview been taken over by the state? Because they haven't had a successful or acceptable housing plan?
Not that I know of where the state actually took away their permitting uh authority, but there have been cities that have been fined, there have been cities that have been sued. There have been cities that have suffered great financial consequences as a result of not being certified. Uh, and the state continues to up their game. So I would not be surprised if during the next eight years we saw more aggressive moves to, uh, you know, for, uh, on cities that were not in compliance.
I would add that, you know, recently, um, AB or is it SB or AB twenty-two fifteen was passed and is waiting for signatures if it hasn't been already signed. And that is kind of an example of what Barry's referring to where it just kind of pushes it a little bit further in terms of what the state can do, um, pursuing cities that haven't been or aren't making an effort to reach the obligations, their obligations.
I mean, I, I'm always curious, you know, the what-if, like those Rena numbers, what if? Is anyone, I noticed that list pretty, pretty narrow in scope, in my opinion. Was there any thoughts of actually putting a developer who would be maybe more knowledgeable and more directly interested in, you know, I mean, in, on that, on the committee?
Yeah, we actually have two seats for developers on the committee, one for a nonprofit and one for a for-profit developer. So the, they, the development community will be represented.
Good, good. And I'll just go out to the commission at this point that I, I served in nineteen ninety-nine and twenty on the general plan twenty twenty. So I believe I might have, might have done my service at this point. So don't try and nominate me.
I have a quick question. Um, yeah, I was glad to see a developer on there and also a low-cost standard for-profit housing developer. I'm sorry if I missed it, but, you know, obviously there are a good number of homeless people in San Rafael and, you know, they sort of, they really run the range of sort of the, the type of communities they represent, you know, they compete, people obviously with mental health issues, with drug abuse issues, but also families, um, some elders and whatnot. What, was there a representative from the homeless community um listed on the steering community?
Yeah, yeah, one of the twelve seats is for, um, yeah, for homeless advocacy. And that will likely be a service, an organization providing supportive services to people experiencing homelessness um in the community.
So we would directly be able to, to hear from the homeless community then through that person?
Right, right. And the, the mayor has raised a similar point and asked us to do some focused outreach to to homeless residents in the community.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing and I'll ask staff to open up public comments.
Yes, so if you are here to speak on this item, you will have three minutes and raise your hand with the raise your hand icon. And if you're phoning in, please dial star nine. And the first speaker is Grace Garrity.
Yes, hello, my name is Grace Garrity. I'm a resident of, uh, Terre Linda for thirty-four years. And I noticed on the list of participants that you have, you know, several, for instance, developer of for-profit and nonprofit developer. There are several homeless or um housing advocates, but there's only one neighborhood community representation. So, one, is that fair? And two, uh, how do you select that uh neighborhood community representation? Because of course, San Rafael is made up of many communities.
Thank you, Grace. You have two more minutes if you have anything else to add.
No, I'm just sorry that in this public comment period, um, we don't get any answers.
Well, one of the commissioners may, may follow up with a question to staff. The comment first. Thank you, Chris. If there is anyone else here to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand icon. And the next person to speak is David.
Yes, hi, good evening. Thank you for all your work. I, uh, am a twenty-three-year, I think, resident of Terre Linda. I echo Grace's comments about the, uh, the sort of lack of community input into into things that are gonna change the communities or have the potential to change the communities. Uh, I do want to just ask a question that hopefully one of the commissioners will answer or or, uh, Mr. Miller will answer. And that is that all meetings of that steering committee will actually be open for public participation, uh, in either the Zoom. Uh, context or if COVID ever goes away in the, um, in the, uh, in-person context. Uh, but that's all I've got to say, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Um, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Please use the raise the hand icon or dial star nine. And it looks like that there is no more public comment.
Thanks, Leslie. At this point, I will close the public hearing. Uh, I'll call in commissioners one by one to ask any follow-up questions of staff. I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Harris.
No comment at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Heaven.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Lubomirsky.
Yeah, um, I'll bury about the question that was asked by a couple of members of the public about a neighborhood. Was there any thought to putting someone from the Federation or something on the?
Y- yes, thanks for asking and and to, uh, Grace and David, thank you for bringing that up, uh, as well. So we do have, as as both speakers pointed out, a neighborhood representative, um, and that representative, we we approached the Federation of San Rafael neighborhoods. Uh, which now includes Terre Linda HOA. Uh, and received a nomination from the Federation, so there will be somebody representing the 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 Federation. But to their point about other neighborhood representatives, uh, there are a couple of things, um, be an opportunity. Uh, potentially, the council could expand the committee, and we we have actually heard this. Um, from other organizations in the city that they felt should be included in this. Um, the other point about this is that the committee is meeting six times for two hours each meeting. We have a much larger outreach program that will be rolled out as part of this project where. We absolutely want to hear from the neighborhood groups. We'll go to, uh, the individual HOA's neighborhood organizations. And other stakeholders in the community and talk to people and hear their concerns about housing. Uh, to David's, uh, question, we absolutely will make these meetings open to the public there. There will be a limited time for public comment as there are, as there were at the general plans steering committee meetings, but the. Um, the intent is for all of this to be transparent and open to the public with opportunities for comment. So I I I do think there will be ample opportunities beyond this, uh, twelve-hour working group. Um, over the next year and a half to get input from a diverse group of people that includes many of the neighbor, all of the neighborhood groups.
Thanks, Barry.
Commissioner Mercado, any questions?
Question.
Commissioner Saudi?
No comment. No questions.
Vice Chair Privatalli?
Uh, no more questions, thank you.
Okay. Uh. Any additional comment from staff and comment or advice from staff at this point?
Uh, I have no further comments. Uh, we're looking forward to your recommendation. I will say the first meeting of this group, uh, we had hoped would be in late November, sorry, late October. Uh, it's looking more like early November, um, since we're now planning for a community meeting in late October, but we're going to. Once we get started, we're going to continue to move, uh, forward pretty quickly and have these meetings monthly through, uh, through May of next year.
Okay, so onto the commissioners, uh, does anybody have any comments? And if no comments, I would request a motion to accept the report and select a commissioner to be on the housing element steering committee. And just announce your name prior to the motion for a second. And again, you can nominate yourself if you so choose.
I'll make a. Go ahead.
I'll not, oh, I'll nominate myself. I'm very interested in this topic. I'm ha- I'm happy to describe, um, my interest more fully. Whatnot, if if someone else would like to, uh, nominate another person, but I'm I'm volunteering.
A second.
And that's Vice Chair Privatalli. For the, noting this. Any additional nominations?
Um, I just, I think I had a question for Barry. Barry, what are the the structure of the meetings going to be like? You said they're two hours. Is it kind of like the general plan steering committee? You have an agenda you can walk through?
Yes, um, we're looking at having a professional facilitator run the meetings, and then I would be there and. Other, uh, there's another member of the consulting team who would be present as subject matter experts. Um, but pretty similar to the way we ran the general plan, uh, steering committee meetings. I just would say the content is much more focused. Um, obviously on housing issues.
Thank you. Another comment, I think Commissioner Privatalli would be great. You're really insightful. You asked really good questions, even tonight with. Who should be on it, so. If you have the the bandwidth right now to take it on, then I I support that. I appreciate that, thank you. I'll make sure that, um, I check in. I'd like to try to check in with the, uh. Planning Commission on a regular basis to give updates and, you know, seek advice and ask questions and get your opinions on things.
We still need a vote.
Um, I, I, okay, yeah, I seconded it.
Yes, okay, so are there any other nominations before we vote on the first? No, okay. And. So the motion by Vice Chair Privatalli, seconded by Luban, excuse me, Commissioner Lubomirsky. Um. And this is to have Commissioner Vice Chair Privatalli be on the steering committee for the housing element.
And to accept the report.
And to accept the report, yes, thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Hi.
Commissioner Haberman.
Hi.
Commissioner Lubomirsky.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Saudi.
Hi.
Commissioner Vice Chair Privatalli.
Yes.
And Chair Samuzi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, congratulations, Vice Chair. All right, next we'll move on to the director's report.
Yes, thank you. Um, so a few things, as Barry Miller mentioned, there will be a housing element community meeting on October twenty-seventh. So put it on your calendars and, um. Hopefully you can all attend, and that is for, uh, obviously the community here as well. And I also wanted to mention that the, um, San Rafael Transit Center draft EIR. Um, staff-prepared comments, um, and that is being presented to the city council for review, uh, this coming Monday. And the other thing I just wanted to mention are some upcoming items. We have a few planning commission meetings coming up. Uh, the next meeting on October twelfth, you will be seeing eight hundred Mission Street. Which is a modification to, uh, permit for a, uh, care facility. And then on October twenty-sixth, it is the, um, common meeting for the Tuscornia Marsh Restoration Project, the draft EIR. And I want to particularly mention that because I did send out an email this week with the links to the draft EIR and the availability. Just because if you are interested in in reading the documents, they are quite large, so I wanted to give you sufficient time for that. So that is the extent of my report. Thank you.
Le- Leslie, what was the, was there, what was the, maybe I missed it. What was the preferred location for the, uh, Tran- Transit Center moving?
Oh, goodness, I'm gonna hit yes. Director, Judy Siegel, answer that question, thank you.
Good question. Um, so you can actually access the, um, draft EIR on the district's website, and I can. I can send it to you guys individually. Um. Uh, so the, the draft EIR identifies options as, um, part of their evaluation, and there were, um, the. Um, move, whistle-stop alternative is one of the options. Adapt, whistle-stop or alternative is another one of the options. Um, the fourth, street gateway option, and then we under the overpass. Um, option. Uh, and the preferred alternative is the move-whistle-stop alternative. The one that the district is hoping for.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, do any PC members have any communication? And if so. Floor is yours. No communication from anybody? All right, then, the meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Bye-bye.